Quiet, please. Good, good morning and welcome to the New York City Hybrid Hearing on the Committee on, the Subcommittee on Zoning and Franchises. Please silent all electronic devices. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Good morning and welcome to a meeting of the Subcommittee of Zoning and Franchises. I am Councilmember Lynn Schulman. I'm going to be the acting chair of the Subcommittee. This morning, I am joined by Farrah Lewis, Councilmember Farrah Lewis, Councilmember Shona Brayu online, and we're joined by Councilmember Kalman Jaeger, who's in attendance today. Today, we will hold public hearings for two proposals, one in Brooklyn and one in the Bronx. Before we begin, I recognize the Subcommittee Council to review the hearing procedures.
Thank you, Chair. I'm William Vidal, Council to the Subcommittee. This meeting is being held in hybrid format. Members of a public who wish to testify may testify in person or via Zoom. Members of a public wishing to testify remotely may register by visiting the New York City Council website at www.council.nyc.gov/landuse to sign up. Or for those of you here in the chambers, please see one of the Sergeant-at-Arms to prepare and submit a speaker card. Members of a public may also view a livestream broadcast of this meeting at Council's website. When you're called to testify before the Subcommittee, if you are joining us remotely, you will remain muted until recognized by the Chair or myself to speak. When you are recognized, your microphone will be unmuted. Please take a moment to check your device and confirm that your mic is on before you begin speaking. We will limit public testimony to two minutes per witness. If you have additional testimony you would like the Subcommittee to consider, or if you have written testimony you would like to submit, instead of appearing before the Subcommittee, please email it to landyuestestimony@council.nyc.gov. Please indicate the LU number and/or project name in the subject line of your email. We request that witnesses joining us remotely remain in the meeting until excused by the Chair, as Councilmembers may have questions. Chair, Acting Chair Schulman will now continue with today's agenda items.
We're switching the agenda a little bit. We're actually going to open, first, I want to acknowledge that Councilmember David Carr has joined us. I will now open the public hearing on LU's 253 and 254 related to 1233 57th Street rezoning in Councilmember Jaeger's district in Brooklyn. This application seeks to rezone an existing R5 zoning district to an R6A zoning district and map mandatory inclusionary housing over the rezoned area. For anyone wishing to testify on these items remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online, and you may do that now by visiting the Council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. And once again, for anyone with us in person, please see one of the Sergeant-at-Arms to prepare and submit a speaker card. If you would prefer to submit written testimony, you can always do so by emailing it to Council, is, Council, do you want to make, no? Okay. Council, please call the first panel for this item.
The first panel consists of Richard Lobel, Nicholas Libares, and Rachel Belsky. Are you all busy substituting for Rachel? Okay, I'll ask you to state your name for the record.
Council, please administer the affirmation.
Please raise your right hand and state your name for the records, starting. You have to turn on your microphone.
Max Stember Young.
Thank you.
Nick Libares.
Richard Lobel.
Do you affirm to tell the truth, or whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the Subcommittee and in your answers to all Councilmember questions?
I do.
I do.
Thank you. For the viewing public, if you need an accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landyuestestimony@council.nyc.gov. Now, the applicant team may begin. Panelists, as you begin, I'll just ask you to please restate your name and organization for the record.
Thank you, Acting Chair Schulman. Good morning. Richard Lobel of Sheldon Lobel, P.C., for the applicant. I'm joined today by Nick Libares, the project architect, as well as Max Stember Young. And we're here today to talk about the 1233 57th Street rezoning. If you could load the presentation. While the presentation loads, we're here for two actions, which have been approved by City Planning, the first being a zoning map amendment to rezone all our portion of six lots along 57th Street from an R5 district to an R6A district. This would permit development of a five-story-plus seller building with a total floor area of roughly 79,330 square feet and 46 dwelling units to be constructed on three lots along this block front. The second action, of course, would be, as with all of such rezonings, to allow for a text amendment to Appendix F to require mandatory inclusionary housing on the project site. This here would result in approximately 12 permanently affordable units of the 46 units proposed. Next slide, please, and actually, if you can go to the third slide. One more. Thank you. So, this is the proposed development, and these are the numbers. One back, one back, please. These are the proposed numbers behind the development. It was certified by City Planning as an eight-story-plus seller and subseller development with 79,000-plus square feet. And so, during the course of the hearing process, the project was modified to allow for a shorter building. This was in discussions with community stakeholders who were concerned over the fact that this would be an eight-story building, so it was reduced to five stories. The FAR would remain the same at 3.6 and would allow for an eight-foot side yard along the Westerly side lot line. I'm going to just go through some of the zoning background, then Nick would talk about some of the architectural design factors of the building. The building itself, from the Westerly portion, starts at four stories. This is because, as you'll see on the map, there's a setback from the adjacent R5 to require a step down at the side lot line that is adjacent to the lower density district, and then would increase to five stories on the remainder of the lot. There would be 52 parking spaces in the cellar, and there would be 46 dwelling units in the building. Importantly, again, pursuant to conversations with community stakeholders, the bedroom units here are extremely generous in terms of size, with 38 three-bedroom, four-bedroom, and two-five-bedroom duplex units. This would result in 44 of the 46 units at the site being three bedrooms or greater. This is, in my experience, is unparalleled in terms of the size of units for development. Can talk about that as well. The next slide is the zoning map, which demonstrates, in part, why we feel that this is an appropriate rezoning. You can see the block associated with this rezoning has R6 on it immediately to the east of the project site. This will become clear in the next two slides. But importantly, for our purposes, we are central in terms of our access to major thoroughfares, to public transportation, as well as to larger buildings in general. There is an eight-story building immediately to the east of our site on this block. The next slide is, demonstrates the exact area of the rezoning district, which would be an R6A, a contextual district, which has a height limitation unlike most of the R6 districts to the north of the site. So, again, in terms of the zoning map, this is in an area where the R6 on our block, as well as greater than 100 blocks to the north, have an R6 designation with no absolute height limit. The R6A here caps the height at eight stories. Again, here, we would be developing a five-story building. The next slide is the area map, which demonstrates why this area is particularly appropriate for rezoning. You can note that 13th Avenue, which is 150 feet east of the rezoning area, is a wide street at 80 feet. The D-line of the subway is, the new Utrecht 55th Street Station is two blocks to the north of the site. There is bus service along avenues in the site. In essence, it is a well-suited site in terms of transit-oriented development. This was something that was noted by Chair Grotnick in hearings on this matter before City Planning, which called the application a, quote, "model of transit-oriented development." So, this is something which, in terms of the opportunity to take a vacant site, which is not only underutilized, but not utilized right now, to create housing generally, affordability in an area which needs affordability, large unit sizes to be sensitive to the local area, but also allow for, importantly, affordable units that will be in large unit sizes as well. As the Council is likely aware, mandatory inclusionary housing requires that the affordable units in the property be of the same ratio as the units generally in the property. So, because this site offers 46 of 48 units in terms of three, four, two, three, four, three and four bedroom units, two, three and four bedroom units, three, four and five bedroom units, I'm sorry, the affordable units similarly would be three, four, and five bedrooms. This is, again, something which is relatively rare, if it has ever occurred in terms of an approval of this nature. So, the bottom line is, we're creating housing, but more importantly, we're creating affordability with larger units, something which is, you know, really valuable in terms of the opportunities for less fortunate families. I would now defer the conversation to Nick Libares, who will discuss some of the context of the area, as well as the proposed architectural design. Nick?
Yeah, thank you, Rich. Thank you for your time, everybody. So, when we first looked at this site, you know, this is, this is one of the nicer neighborhoods, I think, in the borough. There's a very, there's a very 1950s wholesome feel to the entire thing. There's typically these three-to-five, five-story structures, and, you know, it was something that we were very, very cognizant of. We wanted to fit in, we wanted to make something that was attractive, you know, for the neighborhood. And it was something that ownership was also very much on message about always, you know, they wanted to do something that had a chance at actually getting, you know, getting built. So, when we, when we, when we looked at this, if you could go to the next slides, please, when we looked at this, what we saw was that, on this, on this block, well, this is actually, next, next slide, please. So, on this block, you could see that there's, there's a lot of this typical fabric, which is between three, three and four stories high facing the street. So, it's kind of taller, taller houses. And what we saw when we went, went to the Google Maps was that this stuff often features setback floors that you can't see from, from the street. So, we saw that there were, there were typical heights within a half-block that ranged between 45 and almost 60 feet to the tops of the roofs. Like Rich, Rich mentioned, there's also something that's at the east end of the block, which is eight, eight stories high. It's quite high. But, you know, 13th Avenue is, is a very pronounced commercial corridor, you know, there's a lot of traffic there, a lot of foot, foot traffic, so something which is more, you know, typically found where you have the more densely built-up areas. So, when we took our first crack at this, what we did, could you go to the next slide, please? What we did, next, next slide, please. What we did was something which was a little bit, like audacious, maybe, and we went higher than, you know, what, in hindsight, was, was probably, let's say, wise. And the thought was that what we see in this area is, is a need for kind of, for interim housing before people buy. So, there's a lot of young, young people that can't quite afford the housing yet. So, we thought that this was something which was appropriate, because it would provide rental housing for this, for this part of the demographic. So, while, while these units were, were, like, let's say generously sized, you know, there was also this, this thought that this, this wasn't going to be permanent housing, and that in this part of the neighborhood, we could maybe do something taller. So, the feedback that we got from the community was that that's not the case, so we made a big adjustment, and now we're at about five, five floors. And the next slide, please. Can we, can we just advance it? There's maybe five or six or seven slides ahead of this. Yeah, keep, keep going until you, until you hit the first rendering, please. Yeah, so this is all the stuff Rich, Rich talked about, very, very close proximity to all the transportation. Okay, so this is, this is the front elevation. You can see over here to the left, we have the more typical fabric on this west side of the block, the north, the north side of it, where you have two and three, three-story houses. We're right up against a two, two-story house. We have an eight-foot side yard there, which is mandated by the zoning. Then we have this blending for, for floors for the first 25 feet, and then it pokes up to, to 55 feet. So, we have a five, five-story building. We've shown something to, who, who did we show it to? We showed it to, I think, to the Borough President, and we showed it to the City Planning Commission also, where we have a five, a five-story, where we have the fifth floor also setback. So, this is an option right now that we also have, have on the table. But, you know, whether it's this or the setback version, we have something which we think is, is very contextually appropriate. You can see the way that we've articulated the street wall. It, it fits in, in scale, both width and also height, with other stuff that's proximal to it. To the east over here, to the right side, you have three-and-a-half, half-story buildings. And then, over to the far right, you can see this, this much taller building. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. We are proposing parking in the cellar, and we have 52 spaces proposed. Next, next slide, please. The next floor up is a slightly, a slightly depressed first floor, which allows us to stay under the high cap while still keeping, while, while still keeping ample ceiling heights. And you can see over here that we have these very oversized cellar duplexes. And this is how we've been able to keep an R6A so squat, because we place all this, all this floor area down into the basement. So, these guys have some nice back, backyards. There's this exterior, like, walkway, which, which we, which we contemplate as being not, not just egress, but also a place, you know, for people to put bikes, you know, to store baby carriages, you know, maybe it's someplace where people could, could go hang, hang out. Next slide, please. So, this is the ground floor. You could see that there are five, there's five cores, there's five entrance lobbies. Next slide, please. So, the typical, the typical layout on these floors, this is something that we've, we've had a lot of success with further, further north, where we have these units that go back and forth. So, so everybody's able to go and see their kids coming home from school on the, on the bus, and also able to kind of surveil the backyard. So, you have floor-through units, 10 of them on each floor, three, three bedrooms typically. And you could see that we have 46 units total proposed with this scheme. The preponderance of them, these, these typical three, three beds, then, then you have the four-bed duplexes, the two-five-bed duplexes, and then the odd two and one, one bed, which are kind of left over with that space that's on the ground floor. So, next, next slide, please. This is, this is just showing how we, how we do the R5, R6 blend on that west side, on that left, left side of the page. We have the 25-foot space before it goes up to being 55 feet at its full height. And next, next slide, please. This is looking west down, down the street, and you could see here that we are, you know, roughly contextual with, with what's there. The thing that we were, we were also very careful with was the way that the traffic was managed. So, we have an entrance for the cars, which is at the east end, which you could see closest over here, and then it exits on the west end. So, we mess, mess with the parking very, very little. We maybe lose two, two spots that way from the, from the street. And it's also a very orderly procession of cars on and off the site, because what, what we have observed is that there's a lot of traffic at, at the certain parts of the day, and we think that this is a good way to manage that. Next slide, please. This is the reverse shot, looking east, and you can see here that we have that, that small house, and this is kind of a very gentle, like, interpretation of something that you see typically all over the Bronx and also Brooklyn, where you have these newer, you know, buildings, you know, generally, anywhere from, from pre-war, you know, to the present, where you have the buildings next to these existing houses, and we think that this is a very, you know, refined articulation on the side, and something that really smooths that, that gap in a way which is inoffensive and actually kind of pleasant. And with that, my presentation concludes, and I'll, I will kick it back to, to Rich.
Thank you, and thank you, Nick. So, I think in conclusion, we would just want to add two points. The first is that a 22,000-square-foot site in an existing R5 can produce 44,000 square feet of community facility, or a medical office building. So, when we were looking at the options for the site, and particularly looked at the five-story residential option, the massing is very similar in terms of height. You would be able to put up a five-story medical office building. And in terms of density and the intensity of the use, as Max would be able to attest to, the traffic and issues caused by a site which would have that much medical office would be, you know, fairly high. And this is just kind of one of the characteristics of the city's R5 zones. So, taking all of that into account, looking at the large unit sizes that are being offered here, which is, you know, again, something which we're proud of in terms of the development, we're hopeful that the Council can support the decisions of the Brooklyn Borough President, as well as City Planning, and allow us to move forward with productive development on the site. And with that, the entire applicant team is happy to answer questions.
Thank you. I have a few questions for the applicant team. Can you talk a bit about the discussions you had with the community board? I understand that you spoke with the board on more than one occasion and introduced a proposal with a reduced height. Could you please clarify the factors and trade-offs you considered when evaluating alternative zoning districts?
Sure. Acting Chair Schulman, so, there were, there were several meetings with the community, particularly as we entered ULRP. And this is in addition to conversations which the applicant had with community members prior to the, entering into ULRP. The idea here was that, there is no doubt that the building could exist at eight stories in an R6A. But as is the case with most applications that we bring through ULRP now, we will end up at something of a reduced height, given the fact that applicants now will readily enter into restrictive declarations, record those against the property, enter into community benefit agreements. In, in this case, we actually did go so far as to draft a community benefits agreement. And the idea would basically be that, look, we understand that land use would support an R6A here, and the, the City Planning Commission so found that, but we also want to be members of the community, and we want to be sensitive to that, to those issues. And so, you are able here to say, okay, we're going to reduce the height to something you'd be able to get as of right in some development, and we're going to reduce the unit count to 46 units, which allows for extremely generate unit sizes, as we've demonstrated. So, the bottom line is, we're, we're well aware of the community's feelings about this. We tried to make modifications to our development plan to reflect that. Sadly, it didn't go the way we wanted to in terms of the community board vote, but we did end up with what we feel is a more contextual design.
Could you discuss other recent rezonings in this area and the type of new development that has been constructed in the neighborhood?
Well, you know, with regards to the neighborhood, it's actually rare, and one of the reasons, I think, that this rezoning has merit is because there are relatively few inclusionary units which have been introduced into this neighborhood. You now have an opportunity with a 22,000-square-foot site to actually concentrate some development and include some affordable units on this site. When we talk about this area, but more largely Brooklyn and what we've been seeing, on sites that are central to transportation, adjacent to wide streets, an R6A is something which we've seen with great regularity. In fact, on narrow streets, streets which underzoning are streets less than 75 feet, we have actually had R7A districts commonly throughout, you know, much of Brooklyn. So, I would point to Park Avenue, where we recently had 446 to 448 part. That was at an R6A zoning district. Flushing Avenue, where we rezoned to, again, on a, a street that does not meet wide street requirements, rezoned to R7A. So, again, I think that sadly, this area has not had that type of, of rezoning activity in terms of being able to create this housing. But in Brooklyn generally, we have seen R7A on, on streets less than 75 feet, while this would be R6A.
If this rezoning were not approved, what does the applicant plan to do with this site?
It's a hard question. I think the answer is that we'd have to look at what the options are. It's, it, it doesn't make sense for the applicant to proceed with R5 residential development on the site. And so, you know, one of the options, frankly, would be looking at whether or not a community facility was feasible on the site. From a square footage and bulk standpoint, that development creates 44,000 square feet. It's something that we looked at. It's not something that the applicant wants. I don't even think it's something that necessarily would be within the context of the area. This area is largely defined in its mid-blocks areas by residential use. But having said that, with regards to optionality, that has to be one, one of the options which would be at front and center in terms of what they can do.
Okay, thank you. I want to first acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmember Moya, and I want to ask Councilmember Jaeger, do you have questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Rich. My starting point, of course, is I want to acknowledge, or be grateful for your acknowledgement of the 1950s wholesome feel of our community. It's what we're striving to keep, and it's a little bit why we're here today in a mildly contentious way. I, I want to go over, if you don't mind, before we get to the meat of the project, some of the broader, a place of how the, of how the presentations went before we came to this place, because as you know, there are some steps before we get here. You were at the community board in April, and approximately 200 written comments, approximately 200, 250 people came out and testified you had presented an eight-story building. And recognizing that that was really not feasible, and that would get a no vote, you, you asked us to do something that, we offered, and you accepted, to do something that I don't think any community board does in the city, come back again with a better proposal and try to get to a yes. I have attended in my life well over 1,000 community board hearings in every single borough, either in person or watched it, including my own 18 years on the community board, and as a staffer to a Borough President and a Councilmember. I have never in my life seen a community board that brought the same project back a second time on an advisory basis. Also, never seen in my life, an applicant come into a community board, make a presentation, make representations of that, of what they would be willing to do, and then when asked to sign a document saying, "We agree we're going to do what we presented," say, "No, that's a step too far. We can't commit in writing to what we presented verbally." I've never seen that. I've been doing this for a few minutes. Top, top, we don't do that, we don't clap here. So, you can, you can, you know, I don't know what they do, a little snappy thing? Okay, you can do that. It's not really my shtick, but other people do that. But, no clapping, unfortunately. The, the point of this dialogue, one-way dialogue so far, is to set the stage for, for this conversation, because we are, you know, you, you referenced that there aren't a lot of rezonings that happen in Borough Park, and it's true. And one of the reasons is because Borough Park, about three, four decades ago, was re, rezoned to an R5 almost across the board throughout Borough Park, and people are building R5s all across the board in Borough Park. The reason this Council, City Planning, doesn't see rezoning applications is because the good people of Borough Park figure out how to build with what they have. To be clear, when the applicant purchased the property, the zoning wasn't a secret. It's not like he didn't know what he was getting. He knew what he was getting, he bought an R5, paid R6 prices, but that's between him and, and his wallet, not me. I didn't tell him to overspend on a piece of property, being reliant on that, well, you know, later on, some other guys are going to rezone this for me. And the, the place where we are today is that the community board was willing to say yes to a four-story building that was an R6B, that was limited to four stories, still higher than anything else on the block, and the community board was able to get to a yes on that. And the applicant was okay with that, did a whole fancy presentation, you know, rejiggered this whole business to, to make it match. And within a day, your answer to the community board, and I don't, I don't like to do some, you know, throw words back at you, but, you know, it's your words, and hope you don't mind, that the, the, you're not proceeding with the community benefits agreement. By the way, the only benefit that we were asking is a promise to keep to the word of the applicant at the hearing. Other times that community benefits agreements are negotiated with members or with community boards, it's, you know, give me a park, give me a this, give me a that, a new school, pave the road. They didn't ask for anything ancillary to the property. All we asked for is that what you walked in and grabbed our mic and said you were going to do, you do. That was the only thing. And your response to the community board was, the, the applicants representatives felt that an R6B zoning district with the restrictions as discussed would make the project unfeasible, and unfeasible is probably what you meant, but the, the, the board asked you back, what restrictions were you referring to? Because we didn't insist on any restrictions. And the restrictions that you then wrote back, and I've distributed this email exchange between Mr. Lobel and the community board to my colleagues here on this committee, the restrictions that were discussed included height, four stories, and density, 36 units, as well as unit distribution and parking. Those were all the things that you said. Those were the restrictions. It was your restrictions. We didn't give you a list of things you had to do. You walked in and said, "These are the things I'm willing to do," and you got a yes at it. You were going to get a yes. I mean, they said, "This is something we can live with." So, having given the context, because I don't think that that clear context came through in the presentation, so now I'd like to ask, why is it that you are not able to agree to the proposal that you presented to the community?
Sure. So, and thank you, Councilmember, for the background and the opportunity to speak. And of course, aside from being an officer of the court, I'm also under oath, and so everything I say is presumed to be true. I would also hold my 20-year career before the Council and I would also hold my twenty-year career before the council and the city zoning agencies as evidence of what I'm about to say. The applicant here proceeded at all times in good faith. There was never an idea here where they were going to pull a fast one or come in and do a switch. That wasn't the idea. This is ULRP. There were decisions that were made at the last minute. There was a discussion around R six B. And so this was very much on the fly. And so, community board, you know, the community board here is a community board we've been before many times and have come through with many wonderful projects that have been supported, synagogues, Yeshiva, you know. And so, it's, you know, we're familiar with the area and with the people here. And so, I think we made it, we made it, we made an effort. There was a chance that it could work at an R six B, and we tried for that. But in all honesty, after further review and looking at the numbers, which again, were put together, you know, with great speed because of the nature of the, the last-minute nature of a lot of the process, it didn't work for the applicant. And so, part of that is our fault as an applicant team, and I get that. But, you know, again, if we're speaking in good faith, and again, if we're being honest, this is not the first time that this has been brought before, you know, the council and you as council member. There were discussions that went back. And so, this was not a process where we just started and said, "We're popping an eight-story building here." The applicant in good faith proceeded over the course of what amounted to be years to try to bring this project to fruition. It's a vacant lot. It's an opportunity here, and so we were making our best effort. And you had certain restrictions in terms of height and parking, and we attempted to comply with those. It is very much an iterative process. So, the bottom line is, yes, we did come into the community board with an R six B and reduce the height. You know, again, given the nature of development right now in the city and the economics, that wasn't going to work. And so, the applicant made the decision to say, you know, "I would rather address a reduced R six A than go to an R six B." The other thing to realize, of course, is that an R six B allows for a two-point-two F A R. The existing R five allows for two, for a community facility building. That, the difference between those districts, in the final analysis, a point-two F A R in the site was insufficient to allow the applicant to move forward in terms of financing a project and being able to follow through. So again, you know, again, as someone under oath and someone who's been before the community board, everything was done in good faith. There was never any bad faith involved. But at the end of the day, we just could not make the numbers work on that development.
Thanks for that. I too am an officer of the court, and my representations, I believe, can be taken at face value as well. And there's no, there's no insinuation whatsoever that you're not being honest here at the council or that you weren't being honest at the community board. But it's very clear that, you know, attorneys represent their clients, and you bring forth a project that is based on what the client insists you do, and that's okay. And, but again, my point is that zoning has to be contextual. And you got to the place where it was virtually contextual. The four stories still would have towered over everything else on the block, but the representation made to the community board was that this would be acceptable. And in fact, the borough president, in his approval, which you cited in your opening statement, indicated that this would be okay and urged, I believe, urged the applicant to enter into a CBA with the community board to ensure that...
It was for an R six A.
Yeah, for the R six A. Not for the B. Okay. All right. So I take that back, withdrawn, as we say. Let me, let me just try to, try to get some facts out and, you know, forgive the manner in which I do this. But I wasn't trained as a council member. I was trained in a different profession, so it'll be a little Q and A, but you're used to this. Is, it is true that this would tower over everything else on the block, right? I'm not just making that up.
It is not true.
It's not true. Is there anything on the block that's taller than this?
Yeah, yeah. There's stuff that's to the east that's about probably thirty feet taller than that.
At the corner?
At the corner. And then we went back and we looked all over the block and actually like across the street. And what we saw was that there's eight, at least seven other properties that would match the height of that, of that fifty-five feet to the top of the bulkhead there.
Multifamily dwellings like this, or these are single-family homes?
Single-family homes that have roof, like rooftop additions, you know, stair bulkheads, stuff, stuff like this.
Okay. So that's the point a little bit about the rezoning that was done in Borough Park about four, three, four decades ago. The idea was to allow people to build bigger within the context of their property line, to get more F A R, similar to what we did in Community Board fourteen and the, with the special permit that you're very familiar with, that you and your father are very familiar with, to allow people, not to build multiple dwellings, but to allow people to build their own dwellings and get more bedroom space, get more kitchen space, get more living space within the context of their actual lot line and not to be multiple dwelling. And what was, what this application does obviously is to create a multiple dwelling. But the, to my knowledge and going through the block and on that block quite frequently, not as often perhaps as those who live there, but I would assume a little bit more than you. The block, the properties that are at or thereabout to the, to the height, or the proposed height, are typically one-family homes that have taken advantage of the R five and built themselves nice big houses. Are there multiple dwellings within the immediate vicinity that would be anything the width and bulk of this proposal?
Well, yes. Right, right to the east, there's a couple that appear to be conjoined multiple dwellings.
Those are the, those are within the R six?
They're, no, they're in the R, the R five. And they're right, right next to us. And they're, I have the thing right here. They're about thirty-six feet high. And we would be going forty-five feet high. And this, this also brings up another issue, which is actually the perceptible height. So I think if you were to stay at four floors for the setback, you could, you could set this back on a fifth floor in a way which would, which would not make it perceivable from any, you know, from any vantage point on the, on the street, even, even where you to put your back up against the opposite street wall and like really, you know, stretch.
That's not what we saw.
That's not what you saw, but we, we did, we did investigate a version like this. We do have a version like that, which leaves a little bit of F A R on the table.
I mean, I don't mean to cut you, but I'm in a little bit of a conundrum because we did a hearing. You showed us one thing. You did another hearing. You showed us another thing. We're here today.
I know, but the overall point is that we're not, we're not that much out of context. Like, we're maybe ten feet higher of the thing that's right, right, right there next to us. And then the thing that's, the building over is about thirty, thirty to forty feet higher than us. So, you know, to say that it's out of context is not accurate.
The, the purpose of the, at the time that you were proposing sixty units, you had proposed ninety-four parking spots. When you proposed forty-six units, you proposed fifty-two parking spots. You've now, then you went to thirty-six units and you proposed the same fifty-two parking spots. Do you have a theory, a reason why the parking spots exceed the number of units?
Yes. We had spoken to you at the very beginning, and it was something that you had asked us. I don't, I don't remember your exact words, but I think we had said that if we, if we provide more, it might be something that the community would like.
My thing is always one for one.
Yeah, okay, okay.
One for one. I'm just, I'm just asking to, to try to listen whether or not there's a plan for some, some use within the forty-six that you're now hearing from the council proposing that would be different than residential and would require additional spots? A community facility of sort, doctor's offices?
No, 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 no.
Grocery store, whatever. I don't know.
No, it's always been contemplated that it would be residential, one for one. But, but we also know that some people have more than one car and that there would be demand should people want to get two, two spaces.
All right. Madam Chair, I think that's it for me for now. I'd love to hear from the neighbors.
I now invite my colleagues to ask questions. Councilmember Cordy, you have any questions?
During your testimony, you described the project as roughly contextual. And, you know, frankly, I understand something being contextual is a binary state. It either is or it isn't. And when you use a mitigating qualifier like that, it says to me that it's non-context. And I think some of the dimensional discrepancies that my colleague was talking about between what you're proposing and what's there kind of gives some justification to my concern when I hear something like that. And so I would suggest that as, you know, you, you walk away from today, that you really kind of figure out a way to re-engage with the community stakeholders and my colleague and see what you can do to come up with something that is a true compromise, right? And I, and I think that that's something that's really important to me, as someone who believes in neighborhood preservation, that folks have an invested stake in the neighborhoods they've called for home for their whole lives, generationally even as families, that that's crucially important. So, take every opportunity you can while the clock is ticking to continue to talk. So that's all I'd really like to say at this time. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, Councilmember.
Okay, thank you. There being no, you, I'm sorry. Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you, Chair. You mentioned there is an alternative proposal that has a setback. Did you share that with the council member yet, or the community board?
I don't, I don't think so, no.
Is, could, would you be able to send it right away?
Yeah.
So that he's able to see it?
Yeah, sure.
And what about the CBA? Are you willing to provide a CBA now?
We would one-hundred percent be willing to provide a CBA. In fact, you know, ten or fifteen years ago, CBAs were not even utilized. But lately, I would say that over fifty percent of the rezonings that we do have a CBA or restrictive declaration. And so, we've got one drafted. We would be happy to enter. I mean, we would be thrilled to be at the point in these proceedings where we could enter into a CBA.
All right. How soon would you be able to send it over?
I think it's a little bit dependent on, on what comes out of this. But having said that, the form of the CBA itself could be, we could send it over by the end of the week.
And it sounds like you could probably give two options. The CBA for what you currently have now and with the setback that you're going to email to the council member.
We could.
Okay.
Kate. Go ahead, Councilmember Jaeger.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to follow up on Councilwoman Lewis's question about the CBA. Appreciate that offer. Do you, do you represent or are you able to, and if not, that's okay, right? No is an acceptable answer. But are you able to reduce it down to four stories? Or is your final place that it has to be, it has to have that fifth story?
I, I think it has to have a partial fifth story.
Okay. And...
But it could be, it could be such that it would not be seen from the street at all.
I understand that. When you, when you mentioned earlier that, that it didn't work for the applicant and language along those lines, you mean financially?
Yeah, yeah. Just, just from like a strict feasibility development perspective.
In the sense that if it were to be built, it would be at a loss?
It would be at a loss, and it wouldn't be conventionally financeable.
It wouldn't be?
Conventionally financeable.
Conventionally financeable, okay. All right. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'd also just like to, with regards to the CBA, of course, I have to, the form of, I'm happy to send to the council. I would of course have to talk to my client, you know, with regards to adoption of a CBA, but we're happy to send what was drafted to the council.
With a restrictive covenant?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. There being no further questions, this applicant panel is excused. Council, are there any members of the public who wish to testify in twelve thirty-three Fifty-Seventh Street rezoning remotely or in person?
Acting Chair Schulman, there are approximately six public witnesses who have signed up to speak. For members of the public here to testify, please note that witnesses will generally be called in panels of three. If you are a member of the public signed up to testify on the proposal, please stand by when you hear your name being called and prepare to speak when the chair says that you may begin. Please also note that once all panelists in your group have completed their testimony, if remotely, you will be removed from the meeting as a group, and the next group of speakers will be introduced. Once removed, participants may continue to view the livestream broadcast of this hearing of the council website. We will now hear from the first panel.
Members of the public will be given two minutes to speak. Please do not begin until the sergeant in arms has started the clock.
The first panel consists of Abby Klein, David Heisler, and Mister, I'm sorry if I mispronounce your name, H R E R O. The first name seems to be R E L Ralk? Reichberg? Please join the table. Okay.
Okay, the panel, I just want to remind the panel, each of you has two minutes to speak. Mister Klein, you want to go first? Just put the, make sure the, the mic is on.
Hello? It's on? I should say? I'm, I'm sitting here listening to the panel presenting, and I'm a little surprised because they were under oath, and respectfully, I am shocked at the things that they've said. First of all, as far as this particular lot, I just want to bring to the attention that work has commenced on this property as an R five back last year. So if it worked then, it should continue to work now. Second, I find that the applicant has bent into a pretzel in order to get to the R six zone in, on Thirteenth Avenue. They're skipping over two homes which are R five. They're attempting to attach themselves to an R six, which as of two thousand sixteen is no longer allowed. The city has outloaded, lauded by, I don't know who, Department of Buildings. That six-story building, not eight-story building that the panel, that the applicant is referring to is a, is no longer allowed these days because it has no frontage on Thirteenth Avenue, which is an R six. So it's disingenuous to attach to that building. It's not contextual at all. Every house on that block is thirty-five feet at the most, maybe a little bit more, two, three feet when the roof is pitched, and that's all within the law. So this building would be twenty feet taller than every house on the block. So it's almost double. The neighbors, the neighbors which lots they're trying to include into their rezoning strongly objected because they're losing light and, and, and air because they're losing four feet because they're coming within four feet of their lot. It's interesting to note that the only, the only...
Just summarize, and then you also can submit further testimony and we'll put it in the...
The only thing in front of the city council today is an eight-story building. That's in the application, and we urge you to vote no against it because there's nothing else there.
Thank you, sir. Mister Heisler?
Actually, representing my parents who live in the block, moved there, but purchased the property nine years ago. We moved from a little section of Brooklyn called Seagate. It was very quiet, but it was a little isolated. So they moved out, and they wanted to have something a little more in, with more like, you know, stores and stuff like that. But they wanted this still nice, quiet feel. They loved the block. They loved the neighborhood and everything. It's quiet. It's clean. They, they just love it. This is not something they asked for. So when they purchased the property, they known it was going to be an R six right next door, back-to-back actually. We're talking here that their property is here and their tower would be right on top of that. So it would be extremely intrusive, extremely invasive. The garbage that would be there, the, forget the rodents and everything like that, and the block is a sunlight. But it's not what they asked for when they bought the property. People bought the property with understanding that it was an R five neighborhood. The, it was mentioned actually by the applicant team that it's from the nicest neighborhoods in the borough. That was mentioned by him. He did say that right next, right, a little further down, there's other, there's other developments and bigger. But that's the whole thing of Borough Park is that you have a beautiful, you have a busy, busy street, and then right next to you turn off a block, and it's nice and quiet, and it's beautiful and everything like that. So, to that argument, just, you know, I don't think that would really make sense. And as far as a fifty-two car parking lot, I mean, it's nice that there's parking there, which is great. But a lot of people have two cars per family. So I think that all those fifty-two cars that are there are probably going to be used in the morning, Monday morning at eight, nine o'clock. There's going to be a lot. And at night, I, I'm on the block. I'm saying, "Go to visit my parents." This kid's going with electric scooters up and down, up bikes and scooters and everything like that. Ten fifty cars going in and out every single day. It just, it just sounds dangerous to me personally. And that's, that's really, it's really, it would just be a really serious downgrade of quality of life for the entire neighborhood.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next?
Good morning, honorable members. Good morning, neighbors. Okay, okay. Sorry. Okay, as was mentioned previously, I'm here to irritate and expound, and expound on the issue of trust. We are a tight-knit community, and we try to, try to be accommodating to our neighbors and friends alike. What we see here is something completely different. We don't see any benefit to our community, ourselves. Most importantly, the trust between the owners and us neighbors have been breached. What we mean is, we've had several previous meetings. I will hesitate to call them liars, God forbid, but with the utmost respect, they are putting their benefits first, which seems to blind their clarity here. We understand these meetings are to try and come to an agreement of some mutual sort. But somehow, when it doesn't suit their ulterior motive, they pull the rug from under and start another new plan. With all this being said, we will expect for our community board ahead of us to heed our pain, which I really want to thank our community board member, Kalman Jaeger. our pain, which I really want to thank our community board member Calvin Jaeger for, our council member, uh, Calvin Jaeger, for understanding our pain, um, throughout which I was listening to his, to his questionnaire today, which was extremely, um, I was very proud that he literally looks out for our, for us as members. We're here for that reason that affects us personally and collectively as a community and neighborhood. We ask to be kindly respected and to uphold the original zoning so we don't feel betrayed and we can regain the trust we deserve when we initially all sought to buy our properties. Please listen with your heart and with all the information we have provided up until today. We look forward to restore the trust and maintain our continuous loving and respectful community who cares and looks to support each other. Please support us too. We wish the owners, lawyers, all involved to reconsider their dreams while not turning ours into a living nightmare. Thanks for your consideration, cooperation, we look forward to have this resolved and peacefully continue on with our family and community's life. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much. Do any of, uh, does anybody have any questions? Councilmember Jaeger, do you have any questions for this panel?
No, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? No? Okay, thank you for your testimony.
This panel is dismissed and the next panel is, uh, me, Miriam, Moses Schlesinger, and Jacob Simo. Are you Ms. Miriam?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and excuse me, so could you please, Schlesinger? Um, do, is Jacob Simo? Do we have Jacob Simo here?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, I just want to remind, um, the, um, people testifying that we, there's two minutes each, if you have longer comments, you can submit testimony to the committee and it'll be added to the record, so Miriam, you want to start?
Good morning, all, thank you for your time. As a homeowner residing on this block for the past thirty-five years, I vehemently oppose this behemoth project. Our block nor the community is meant for this type of housing. All the homes are maximum three-family and three-story R five zone. Yes, we did get duped into an R six building with, at the corner with five stories and promises of an underground parking lot that is off limits for tenants who are now scrambling for street parking. When my home was built, it was illegal to build four stories and it shouldn't be any different today. This is a quiet, tree-lined residential street that has more than enough traffic and parking issues on a daily basis. We have a busy church at the corner with an overcrowded parking lot that spills onto the street as well, a public school opposite the church with school buses lined up morning and afternoon. Next is a medical center with ambulances and ambulets, double parking all day. This is directly opposite this monster project. Never mind the fact that the medical center promised us parking lot for employees, which is there but they're not allowed to use again. Let me bring to your attention that Fifty-seventh Street is a city bus route as well. Let's not forget our loads of private school buses that come rolling down our streets twice a day to pick up and drop off our precious children. Now please visualize the morning with this eight-story, four-story, six-story, I don't know what the heck he's proposing anymore, and eighty-five, forty-five, sixty-five apartments, I don't know anymore what I'm coming for, with tenants driving in and out of the same entry and exit points on Fifty-seventh Street. Can you imagine the havoc? There are kids that play on both sides of the block. Do you know, my, if I sent my kid to play down the street with her friends down the street, there are cars coming in and out of the place. And please let's not forget the sanitation truck that needs to pick up the garbage from this massive building that comes about eight o'clock in the morning as well. I'd say it'd probably take about fifteen minutes to collect the garbage. Now how pathetic will that be? As a businesswoman that runs a shoe company, I feel, I fully understand profit and loss margins. I understand, yes, I do understand, this developer needs to get a lot of bang for his buck, yes, he paid three million dollars for each lot, but I can tell you, there are lots of homeowners here from Fifty-sixth Street, Fifty-seventh Street, and Fifty-eighth Street that have paid upwards of three million dollars for their properties as well. In all fairness, I'm closing, in all fairness, why this developer is rightfully expecting to receive any more rights in the way of zoning changes than any other resident on this block is unfair. Let him construct multi-three-family, three-story homes like the rest of us do so that we can maintain the aesthetic look that Fifty-seventh Street and all our neighboring blocks have. We don't want nor need this eyesore in our neighborhood, hoping that I've presented my opposition to this zoning change in a fair and respectful manner. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Schlesinger? Yep.
Good morning. Did I stand before you to express my, the commu, our community's deep concerns about the rezoning proposal Fifty-seventh? We understand the need for growth and therefore, for the most part, every single family home that comes down is replaced with the three to six family home within the existing zoning. But this specific project is, has, poses several issues, I will list six I think stand out. One, inappropriate infrastructure, despite rezoning of a certain lot to R six A in a R five zone disregards the existing narrow one-lane street with an eighth-floor development, the increased density is not suitable for this location, the traffic study overlooks the local family needs. Two, community mismatch, the project is not aligned with the community's desire zone ease because a community being ahead of the curve, the current R five was abzonked to one point eight, which already permits higher density than other R five at one point two five F A R. And the proposal of three point six F A R simply goes too far. Number three, affordability and speculation, despite claims of affordability, the project is likely to increase land prices and hinder housing affordability in our area. The speculative behavior of the developer overpaid to the property is another red flag that requires your attention. Number four, environmental and open space issues, the lack of open space in the project coupled with false assumptions about nearby parks should not allow this to move forward. We must consider our young generation who deserve more than a mere wide sidewalk mislabeled as a park. Number five, alternative solutions, we are not opposed to growth, but we must be responsible and prudent. Why not explore rezoning between Sixty and Sixty-Fifth Street where there are junkyards having been environmental concerns for many years? That could bring true improvement to our community. Number six, call for comprehensive study, instead of allowing the short-sightedness of a single developer, a more comprehensive area-wide study of housing is a potential solution should be considered. In conclusion, we urge you to think of our community's integrity and well-being, the proposal of Fifty-seventh like justifications fails to meet our need and will harm affordability and community harmony. Developer plans to rent this for forty-five dollars a foot while current neighborhood rent runs half of that. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Do any of my colleagues, um, Councilmember Jaeger, you have any questions for this panel?
I, I just wanted to ask you, uh, with regard to the, uh, the bus route, uh, ma'am, that I think you mentioned, um, I believe that this, does anybody here from Hat-Sala?
My house is...
Is a member of Hat-Sala?
Our...
Okay, so I know that you're not there now, but you can, you can indicate to me with an answer and I'll repeat the answer, but Hat-Sala uses that street as its route through Borough Park directly to Maimonides because that's the only clear route, is that...
Correct, they use it as a beeline to Maimonides.
Okay, all right, so...
One more thing, there is, one of the Hat-Sala garages where they park their ambulance is on eleven of Fifty-sixth. So that's a direct route. When a member goes with their personal vehicle to pick up the ambulance, that's a direct route straight down.
Okay, so I'm going to repeat that for the record, so when the members, uh, Madam Chair, as you know from your neighborhood, uh, in Queens, and Councilman Carr knows from his neighborhood in Staten Island, when a member goes with their personal vehicles to switch out, one, one responds to the call, one goes to the ambulance, they go, they are going to that corner and it's my, that's on me that I didn't mention Hat-Sala Garage earlier in my comments and my question, but that's an important topic that we actually need to hit, know at the council, that the, the, that route is almost in essence an emergency route in our community, so it's, uh, in essence of what you said and I repeated it for the record, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember McCarr, any questions for this panel? Okay, um, there being no more questions for this panel, the witness panel is now excused. Thank you very much for your testimony.
The next and final panel is Brezil Eli and Mr. Rivera.
All right, um, I just want to remind the panel, uh, that you have two minutes for your comments, um, Mr. Brezil, is it? Am I doing that correctly? He wants it? Okay.
No, we should call him.
No, did we, Mr. Brezil, you go first, please.
Thank you for the opportunity. Um, basically, we heard this panel trying to explain to the community why this project is good for us, but it's, it's an interesting idea because at all the public opportunities when the, when the community was asked, is this good or not good for them, there was zero, there was zero positive response for this proposal, so it's very insulting, I believe, to the community when you have three people, professionals who are representing one individual who basically has stands of financial gain for this to, to develop and at, at the, at the, at the cost of the whole community, to try to tell us what's good for us when we all expressed ourselves already, many, when, in any opportunity possible, that this is not good for us, it's, I want to just make it clear to the record again, as a community, the proposal that they're telling us is good for us, we are saying is not good for us. And basically, the whole application is based on what we would call self-created financial hardship. This is an individual who overpaid, maybe anticipated the market to go crazy and it didn't happen, and because he made a mistake in his business actions, he's asking now the community to bump, to, 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 to carry that load and do some, you know, create something in our community that we don't want for him to be financially sound. Businesses, sometimes you make money, sometimes you lose money, and unfortunately, to me, it seems like this is the case, that this, this gentleman should be losing money. And in the case where they tell us, well, we could use, we could make a community center, if you could make it, make it, this guy could have done it for ten years already, he's sitting on this vacant property and then they tell us here, oh, this is a vacant and unutilized, it's vacant and unutilized because that was the decision of the home, of the landowner. He could utilize it and he doesn't have to be vacant, this place could have been built ten years ago and make that community center that he says he could have made, but he's telling you at the same time, I can't do it because I can't make money. So it's not fair for a person who made a bad business decision to tell the community as a whole, now you guys have to let me do what I want because I can lose money and I don't really care what's going to happen to the community as a whole.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rivera.
Uh, good afternoon, my name is Rowan Rivera, I'm a, I'm a native from the Bronx, I'm a T L C driver advocate. Uh, my testimony is not pertaining to what's going on here, but we do support the Hasidic community as a native New Yorker, um, but we came here because several weeks ago, the Chair, Mr. Riley, accused me of sending curse texts through my phone. He accused me here on this floor, he said that I was cursing at him via text. If he's going to say such a thing, he should show his face and he should show proof. I'm a strong advocate in the taxi community and we're here to let the council member know that he cannot be doing that, cannot defame my name like that. He knows it's not right. We did not curse at him, we advocate with truth. And when I see him again, we'll let him know, we thought he was going to be here today and he didn't show face. We thank you for the time.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, with that, um, anybody have questions for...
No, Madam Chair, just, uh, if I may for a moment, um, uh, do you, you're, you live on the block, is that it?
I live on the, on Twelve Family.
On the corner around the, okay. Um, the, the, if you can, I mean, I know you referenced ten years, is that a precise number of how long the lot, the lots have been?
No, it's not precise, but I'm past, I live on that block on the corner, we could ask people a little across the street, but I know forever this place is empty.
What was there before, if you recall?
Regular, single homes, like old, old-fashioned homes, the typical that you see...
One families.
That's literally right next door to this property, that's exactly what was there before.
One family, one family homes, driveways, front yards, backyards?
Driveways, exactly.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilmember McCarr, any, no, okay. Um, there being no more questions for the panel, the witness panel is now excused, thank you, sir, for your testimony. Uh, all right, now I'm going to ask, uh, count, uh, just, council to proceed.
If there are any members of the public who wish to testify regarding, uh, twelve thirty-three Fifty-Seventh Street rezoning proposal remotely, please press the raise hand button down or if in person, please identify yourself to one of the sergeants. The meeting will stand at ease while we check for any newly registered members of the public.
There being no other members, there being no other members of the public who wish to testify in L U's two-five-three and two-five-four related to twelve thirty-three Fifty-Seventh Street rezoning, the public hearing is now closed and the item is laid over.
We will be taking just a two-minute recess and then we will proceed to the next hearing.